Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Councilwoman Hayes is not here tonight, so she sends her regards for her absence. Reverend Byron Fair, of course, I see him in the audience. He's gonna lead us in our invocation, and from the prayer we'll go right into the pledge.
Stand. And before we pray, before Brother Byron prays, remember still Brother Paul Hubbard's family. You know, he passed away, it was very last week, but please remember his family. Also, the people there in Roseburg, Oregon, where the shooting happened on Thursday. I emailed Mayor Rich, the mayor of Roseburg, Friday morning early, and just a little short email, just told him that the citizens of Northport were thinking about him and his community. So, Brother Byron, please.
Let's pray. God, we do thank you so much for this day, and for the blessings of life that you've given each and every one of us to be here tonight. God, I do ask that as we begin this time of prayer, that we do remember these special requests that were lifted up. Paul Hubbard family, and then also in Roseburg, Oregon, God, where this terrible tragedy has taken place. God, we know that through your power and your strength, we can get through anything. And so, God, we call upon your name to lead us and to guide us in these situations. And I lift up every family and every circumstance that is present due to these timely deaths, God. We do lift them and give them to you, God, to be in their midst, God, to give them power and strength in the days to come. And God, now, as we can continue on to the business of this wonderful city that you have placed us in, I pray that you give wisdom and vision to each one of these, God, before us tonight. We thank you for this time. We ask that you continue to bless us, and we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'll instruct Mr. Collins to kinda make his way down. We have one item of business to take care of before we actually do our official roll call. We have a swearing-in of our council member, Mr. Bert Sims, of course, and we've got the Honorable U.S. District Judge Scott Kugler in the audience. I can tell by the silence, everybody was kinda on pins and needles, but we'll get this started.
Well, I tell you, Bert, I've been a friend of yours a long time, and I can't tell you how happy I was that you asked me to swear you in. So, I'm going to, I live in the police jurisdiction of the city of Northport, and I'm expecting big things.
Okay. Tomorrow, we'll get started.
So happy to see Melvin here. No, you're gonna get started on tonight.
Tonight, tonight. On my way home, we'll be coming by there.
So, if you place your hand on the Bible, your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
Hi, Bert Sims.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
That I will observe the provisions of the ordinances of the city of Northport.
That I will preserve the ordinances of the city of Northport.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
District four.
District four.
To best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
My Councilman Sims takes his seat. One other thing. About eleven years ago, eleven and a half years ago, I ran for city council. Didn't know anybody at the city, didn't know anything about the city, didn't know much about anything. I'm sure some of you are gonna get an email sometime in a few days from Ghostwriter John Box, saying I was a city council member, saying I didn't know anything. That's okay, it's not surprising, I'm sure that would come out. But one person who did help in that process was Lydia Sebo. When we first came on, we didn't know anything about the city. Lydia was here, so Lydia, if you would step up, we have something just simple for you. And I'll read this out, we just want to tell you thank you. But it says, "Whereas for the last twelve years, Lydia Sebo Avent has been covering the city of Northport for the Tuscaloosa News, and whereas during the last twelve years, Lydia Sebo Avent has covered three Northport municipal elections, and worked with two mayors, fifteen city council members, and three city attorneys, and whereas Lydia Sebo Avent has always worked to ensure that her reporting on and 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 of the city of Northport was factual, informative, unbiased, and consistently provided the Northport community with reliable information. And whereas the city of Northport, its citizens, businesses, elected officials, and the general public, Olivia Sebo Avent, a well-deserved thank you for her commitment to professionalism and integrity, which have been invaluable to the growth, development, and rebranding of the city of Northport. Now therefore, I, Scott Collins, on behalf of the city of Northport, Alabama, do hereby proclaim our sincerest appreciation to Lydia Sebo Avent for outstanding service to the city of Northport, and wish her the very best as she continues on with her next phase of her life. The city of Northport truly is a better place because of her attention and commitment to our community."
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
I will say that when I started covering the city of Northport, I was fresh out of graduate school. I only, I knew nothing about Northport, other than that's where the Globe was, so I went to go eat at the Globe. But during the first four years, if it hadn't been for Scott, and William Tenell, and Ron Davis, and Charles Swan, and Marvin Harper, those are about the only people that would answer my phone calls. So, if it hadn't been for them, I wouldn't have been able to do my job. But it has been refreshing to see how the city has changed, and grown, and evolved over the years. And even though in the last few years, maybe our articles haven't been quite as interesting covering the city of Northport, and Northport's council meetings, it's been better for the citizens because of it. So, it's just kudos to all the job that you guys do. So, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins, call roll, please. I think Mayor is making his way down for another presentation.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Councilman Sims?
Here.
Councilman Harper?
Here.
President Logan?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. President. It's been our practice since we've been mayor and council, we try to recognize a business of the month, every month. Is there somebody here from Scrubby's? Come on up, sir. You doing okay?
Very good.
Now, you Rodney?
Yes, sir.
Very good. All right. Oh, Scrubby's Car Wash, right across the street, couple of blocks down. Whereas Scrubby's Car Wash and Auto Sales is located at thirty-one thirty-one McFarland Boulevard, and was founded in April twenty-ten in Northport, Alabama. And whereas Rodney Guy has been the owner and operator of Scrubby's Car Wash and Auto Sales for over five years. Whereas Scrubby's Car Wash and Auto Sales employs four people, and specializes in complete auto and boat detailing, as well as auto sales. Therefore, I, Bobby Herndon, by the authority vested in me, as mayor of the great city of Northport, Alabama, do hereby proclaim Scrubby's Car Wash and Auto Sales to be Business of the Month, October twenty-fifteen, in the city of Northport, and express our appreciation for their continued contributions to the quality of life and well-being of our citizens. Hey, thank you for being in Northport so much. Anything you want to say?
I just want to tell everybody, thank y'all for letting me be able to be there for five years. I've owned a couple businesses in Tuscaloosa and Northport. I was in the cell phone business for eighteen years, and everybody's been real good, and I love Northport. I live in Northport. I grew up in Tuscaloosa, but of course, my home now, so I wanna thank, thanks, everybody. All right, very good. Thank you for being here.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item six is visitors to address the council. Reverend Byron Fair, of course, we see you back on the agenda. Floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I would first like to just thank the mayor, and for all of the councilmen, for allowing me to come. One of the things I would like to tell you a story about real quick is, last year, July twenty-fourth of two thousand and fourteen, I was diagnosed with non-Hopkins lymphoma. Now, to better translate that, I was diagnosed with cancer. Something that anyone in their late twenties doesn't want to hear from a doctor. And so, being in school, I was at seminary at the time, as I'm associate pastor at Saint Mark United Methodist Church, I had to put that on hold. Many things, as you could imagine, began to be on hold at that very present. One of the biggest things for my doctors were, "You need to take care of you, and do nothing else but take care of you." Well, Byron works a little different, and to take care of him, he needs to be very active. And so, one of the things that I had not finished was my master's at the University of Alabama. I had finished all my coursework, but I had not finished my thesis due to different things that fell through at the time in two thousand and eleven. And so, after my department had found about my condition, he said, "What are you doing? Just sitting around all day? Let's finish this." And so, I did. And this past May, I graduated with a master's in sports pedagogy from the University of Alabama. I say that to say, at the beginning of the year, I asked a simple question to myself and different people that surrounded me, is there, are there any funds or scholarships for someone that's a young adult that's been affected by cancer? Statistics show that in the American Cancer Society states that more than sixty thousand young adults each year are diagnosed with cancer. The sad statistic is roughly nine thousand of these will pass away within the year. But here's the exciting news, is that fifty-one thousand still remain alive and active, and just finding their place in life. You see, these people didn't ask for this, and so what's next for them? I know the effect of medical bills, and the time of just putting things on hold to take care of you. And so, what can be done, and that's where the Fair Hope Foundation comes in, is that we raise awareness, and one of the things that we do is we support young adults financially and morally, and in different ways and other ways, to help them succeed in their lives. Because everyone has a dream, and I believe everyone has a calling to do something. And the last thing that I want to see happen is that to diminish or to stop simply because of something that they didn't ask for, a diagnosis that they didn't want, and a disease that sometimes is not the best in the world. And so, that's what we did, and that's what we're continuing to do. And so, in January, we'll give out our first recipients, our scholarships, and some of those are going to trade schools, some of those are going to the universities, some of those are completing masters, and different things, and we're really excited about doing that. We don't care if you have cancer, we don't care if you're in remission, or if you've just simply been affected by a loved one. We want to help. The simple message is that we want to bring hope. And so, that's why I'm here tonight, is that I want to address the council, and just ask you, can you help me bring awareness to the city of Northport, and to this great county? Because there are so many people that are affected by this disease, and so many young people. And can we give them a future? Can we give them a hope? Because that was a simple message for me, is Byron, you're just sick. You'll get over it soon, your hair will grow back, you'll get your strength back, and it all did, but it was all hope for me. It was all hope for tomorrow. And so, that's what we want to bring at the Fair Hope Foundation, is hope for tomorrow and a future. I do have cards that I would like to give the council, so that you can take time and look at our website.
And as he's doing this, Byron has agreed to hang out a little bit after the meeting. If anybody would like to speak with him about anything, he will certainly be there waiting for you.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any questions from you guys?
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, brother.
Item seven, ladies and gentlemen, is unfinished business. Item seven A one is a second reading of an ordinance amending chapter seventy, article thirteen of the municipal code. Mr. Davis?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is ready for vote by the council. Again, this is for, deals with towing, non-consensual towing on private property only. It mirrors what the city of Tuscaloosa already has, and basically, this gives information both to the city police department, and to the individuals as to where they might find their vehicle, if they inadvertently parked in a towaway zone.
Thank you. Just for the record, too, it's actually article eight, article eight of the municipal code. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there a motion to approve that ordinance amending chapter seventy, article eight of the municipal code?
Moved to approve, Mr. President.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Harper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Second item is a second reading of an ordinance amending section six-six dash two-eight-five of the municipal code. Mr. Davis?
Yes, Mr. President. Again, this deals with transient merchants, and this particular section adds a section for food trucks, and this would deal only with commercial food trucks, with commercial kitchens, where the food is prepared on-site. There's been a couple additions since the first reading, and it deals with the location of the truck. It would not be allowed within five hundred feet of the entrance of a similar type truck. For example, you wouldn't have a Mexican food truck parked in front of a brick and mortar Mexican restaurant, there'd have to be some spacing there. And the other additional limitation is that it would not be allowed in a residential area unless it was approved by the zoning department, such as Bristol Park, when you just had mostly construction going on as far as other than people living in a residential area. But it's ready for vote by the council if it's appropriate.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve that ordinance amending section six-six dash two-eight-five of the municipal code. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sims? Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item three is a second reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at one-six-zero-nine twelfth Street, Miss Gay. We've got some stipulations to it, but I think in our pre-meeting, we wanted to allow the property owner or the council to go through the demolition process as protocol, normal, and then allow the property owner exactly thirty days, or November third, to have the improvements done. But if they don't, I think we'll go ahead and approve the demolition, and we'll get rid of these unsafe structures. Is that right? I'll make a motion to approve that ordinance with the stipulations that, on November third, or the demolition process goes through, November third is the drop-dead date for the property owner to have the unsafe structure met to code. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four is a second reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at twelve-eleven Bridge Avenue, Miss Gay. Same process will go through, and go through with the demolition process as normal, give the property owner thirty days to make remedies to the unsafe structure located at twelve-eleven Bridge Avenue. Is that correct? I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance ordering the demolition of twelve-eleven Bridge Avenue, giving the property owner thirty days, or November third, to make set improvements to the unsafe structures. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five is a second reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at seventeen-ten Seventeenth Street. Again, same rules will apply. Council will go ahead, if it pleases council, to go ahead and demo the unsafe structure, and give the property owner exactly thirty days, or November third, to make remedies to the unsafe structure. I will offer that in form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six is a second reading of an ordinance authorizing a conditional use approval for a group home at three-four-two-one Twenty-Fourth Street, Miss Gay.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This comes with a favorable recommendation from our planning commission, and the owner has been approved by the Alabama State Department in Mill Health, and just waiting for approval from the city council, because in our ordinance, now a group home is only allowed by conditional use, and staff has not received any complaints or in opposition to this request.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve that ordinance authorizing the conditional use for a group home located at three-four-two-one Twenty-Fourth Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
New business, eight A one is a first reading of a permanent resolution accepting maintenance for municipal improvements in Rosewood subdivision. Mr. Swan?
Yes, Mr. President. The developer of Rosewood subdivision, Mr. Charles Compton, has completed the infrastructure requirements for the development. We're recommending that you adopt the resolution that's attached in your packet, accepting those infrastructure improvements for maintenance by the city, excepting the sidewalks.
Thank you. Do you have a motion from council for a first reading?
Moved to approve, Mr. President.
Thank you. That's a first reading motion by Councilman Harper. Item B one is a resolution declaring certain items as surplus and authorizing a proper disposal. Ms. Starnes, I think we had a few items, AC units, some street signs, some desks, some chairs, some doors. Of course, the AC units are exclusively to Shirley Place, and I think, Mr. Collins, you had a suggesting in the pre-meeting regarding some of the surplus items exclusive to Shirley Place. You want to elaborate on that?
Yes, Mr. President, members of council, Mayor Herndon, as you're aware, we're doing some rehabilitation work at Shirley Place. Part of the items to be disposed came from Shirley Place. Our comment to you tonight are that if this is approved, and these items are disposed of, once we sell those items, any of the items that came from Shirley Place that are sold, those funds will be returned to the general fund budget, and earmarked for Shirley Place work. So, any money that comes from Shirley Place goes back into Shirley Place. All the other items will be remitted in the general fund for general use by the council.
Thank you. I'll make that motion approving a resolution declaring certain items as surplus and authorizing a proper disposal. Is there a second? Second by councilmember Sims? Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item two is a resolution declaring certain items as surplus and authorizing a proper disposal. Assistant Chief Burton?
Yes, these are two holographic sites for our rifles that we're trying to surplus.
Thank you. And again, as a point of reference, once we surplus these holographic sites for our rifles, they will be sold to a city vendor, and not for sale on the street to the public. So, I want to make sure we clarify that, chief. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution declaring items as surplus and authorizing disposal. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item three is a resolution authorizing water service outside of city limits. Mr. Collins?
Mr. President, members of council, Mayor Herndon, we have a request for water service outside of the city limits. The request has been made by Tuscaloosa County Park and Recreation to be used at Vandegrift Park. The staff has no objection to the issuance or the granting of the service outside of the city limits. There's no cost to the city, other than allowing para to access water to service the park, which is outside of the city limits, but adjacent to the city limits.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution granting water service outside of city limits at Vandegrift Park?
Moved to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
President Logan?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Item four is a resolution appointing chief of police. Mr. Collins?
Mr. President, members of council, Mayor Herndon, as you are aware, Chief Card retired last August from the Northport Police Department. Since that time, we've had Assistant Chief Gerald Burton acting as chief of police. The assistant chief acts as chief of police in absence of a chief. Chief Burton has done that job exceptionally well since August of last year. Mr. Rose and I, with Human Resources Department, met a couple of weeks ago with the Civil Service Board, requesting guidance from the Civil Service Board regarding moving forward with the filling of a permanent police chief. The Civil Service Board requested that we advertise internally for a period of seven days, to allow internal candidates, not external candidates, to apply for the position of chief of police. I followed that up with a work session with the city council, outlined that request to the city council. At the work session, the city council agreed to post that position, which we did. We did post the position for a period of seven days. We had one applicant for the position of chief of police, and that is Assistant Chief Gerald Burton. The request we have before you tonight, if it's a pleasure of the council, is to have a motion that would name Assistant Chief Gerald Burton as Chief Gerald Burton of the Northport Police Department.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution appointing Assistant Chief Gerald Burton as police chief of Northport. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, and congratulations, Chief Burton.
Congratulations, chief. Item C is our consent agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, we have eight items.[1514.87] Item C is our consent agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, we have eight items. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, PO requisitions, and travel and training for various employees in our departments. I'll make a motion to approve that consent agenda as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Sims? Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item nine is reports of special committees to council. We have none. Item 10, public hearings, we have none on the agenda. Item 11, city administrators' business.
Nothing for tonight, Mr. President.
Item 12, departmental business, we have none. Item 13, public comment. I have three citizens. I'll start with Mr. Gary Minor. Gary, we apologize. I know you were on the agenda item. We moved you to public comment, so you're first up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Gary Minor, 15395, Highway 69 North, Northport, Alabama, 35475. Just here to give a quick update on Vandegrift Arboretum and historic bridge park. We're a few months away from opening up the park. It's the reason for the request for the water. We've spent the last year with thousands of hours of our employees, of volunteer groups, Boy Scout groups, cleaning up the park and getting it ready to open to the public. So, it will feature the oldest iron bridge in the state of Alabama, which is already constructed there, and it will have pavilions, piers, people will be able to come out and enjoy trails, and it's just, it'll be a nice nature park. And it'll be a great thing for the city of Northport. It's right there where our goal is to get it turning into a campground where you can do some primitive camping. It'll be close to town. When folks come and camp there, they'll be able to go and shop in Northport and eat, go to the restaurants, maybe go to the farmer's market, which is also adjacent to the property. So, just giving a little update on that. Do you have any questions about the park?
Thank you, Gary. Second citizen, Mr. Steven Schwab. Mr. Schwab, please state your name and address for the record.
Steven Schwab, 2525th Street in Northport. I wanted to take note that I noticed that in the job listings, under the city of Northport, you now have a job opening for a traffic regulator, I believe, and I think that's a good thing. I appreciate that. I wanted to suggest for your consideration that you think about putting a small traffic island in the center of the intersection of 5th and Main. You might put a tree there. I don't know if palm trees grow here well, or a hawthorn, but the purpose would be to discourage and possibly prevent tractor trailers, large trucks, from going through on 5th Street, which they are prohibited from doing anyway, but they continue to do it. And I think putting a traffic island in there, particularly after the near serious accident that occurred at that intersection when a vehicle traveling at a high rate of speed hit the sign that had been made by the blacksmith, and if that sign hadn't been there, it might have hit or seriously injured human beings sitting there in front of bellies. I would appreciate it if you would give some consideration to that proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last citizen, Mr. Joe Rice.
My name is Joe Rice. I'm developer of the Forest Glen subdivision. I'm here tonight to voice concerns over development process in the city of Northport. I've spoken with the mayor, I've spoken with Mr. Collins, tried to speak with the engineering department, but they won't return calls. I'd like to read a quick letter that I wrote to Mr. Collins back in January. It's been 10 months ago. Hope you had a nice holiday. We hope to get started with our next phase of Forest Glen as soon as soon as we presently have been waiting for approval for six months from the city. Plan, this phase has been a very arduous process. We have already waited six months to get started and had to hire an attorney during our communicating for us. We hope that the city would be more professional in communicating with developers and engineering firms in the future. We also ask that the process of reviewing plans and final plat approval be done in a timely manner. As a lifelong resident of Northport, I am concerned about the future growth of the city. Word is out that the city is not development friendly and is very inconsistent with the process involved in doing a development. Therefore, developers don't want to go through the process of developing in Northport. I believe you would agree that Forest Glen has already had a huge, been a huge asset for the city of Northport. I would hope that the city would want more developments of this caliber. I'm only asking that, as a developer, I be respected and treated fairly. When there is no communication, it is very disrespectful. I hope that our upcoming development will go smoothly. We look forward to working with the city, the city of Northport, and going forward with our project. Been waiting 15 months to get a set of plans approved for two different phases at Forest Glen. One 12 acres, one less than five that is going to help the adjacent development with sewer. I've applied, I've put sewer for two different developments in the city at my expense to help the growth. And I feel very, I've spoken to the mayor and Mr. Collins both, and unreturned phone calls, which to me is very disrespectful. Y'all run a business whether you know it or not, and as developers, we are out to produce a very fine product, which we have, and we're proud of it, but we are on time constraints. Our banks, my banker right now is afraid to even lend me money because he's afraid at the end of the process that it will take so long to get the plat approved that he would have to file foreclosure papers upon me. For the last 15 months, I pretty much have been out of business. It's my livelihood. It's been taken from me. Used to, years ago, if we had a problem, we could come up here and discuss it as men and work out our differences and move forward. That has not happened. It usually takes a year from the time you go to plan and zoning, get your plans processed, and do the development, the construction, and to get a final plat. 15 months, and I haven't even come close to scratching the ground. Gentlemen, y'all have, in my opinion, you have to do a better job in helping us. Y'all need to be calling us, in my opinion, saying, "What can we do to help y'all today?" Y'all are providing housing for people to grow our city. You know, I mean, we're spending millions of dollars and then we, and payrolls, and it's just, to me, it's falling on deaf ears. And it's not right. It's just not right to me. You know, you talk about, you want to grow the city. We're here to, and I'm speaking for myself, but there are two other developers that are here, but they're here in support of me, and we want our plans and our projects to go forward and work together, not be arm wrestling or not return phone calls or emails or stonewall or promise this or promise that. Your city will never grow. It will never grow. We hope that this will change, that y'all can sit down and work with us, get our plans done, so we can get our jobs done and provide housing and rooftops for the city, because that's the only way that your infrastructure will grow, your population. And one more thing I want to say, y'all are sitting on the jewel denial piece of real estate on the riverfront. It has just sat there and sat there and sat there, and I believe that you should try to focus your interest in trying to develop that property as well. I mean, it is the jewel denial, as far as the best piece of property in Tuscaloosa. Y'all should be working diligently to find a developer to come down there and develop that property, build a hotel, and have an entertainment district that would just blow Tuscaloosa away. That's a big concern of mine. My grandfather was mayor of this town one time, and I'm very proud to carry on the tradition of developing and being involved with the city. And we would appreciate some respect, things done in a timely manner, in a professional manner. Because in the real world out there, it doesn't go like this. If you don't stay pace, you call somebody else and you get somebody else to do the job. You don't just sit there and keep waiting for the phone to ring. I appreciate your time. I appreciate you giving this valuable consideration and letting us progress and move our projects forward. Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Rice, you got a cell number? And I'm sure staff has it. Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's all the citizens signed to speak under public comment. Item 14 is mayor and councilmember's business, of course. District 1, the Honorable Councilwoman Hayes is not here tonight. Under my business, of course, I wanted to thank the TCHS alumni for putting on a great alumni week. Again, I wanted to give some kudos to Class of 82. Spirit Award was given out. Class of 71, the best entry. So, I want to make sure we put that on record as well. The bridge replacement near the Hunter Creek Road is going on schedule. It is still on schedule to the end of this month. If you've rode by McFarland, you've looked. As you're going east, it is still on schedule to kind of be opened up. So, I think they're about on the last leg of getting that bridge back open. We replaced that with some culverts, and I think that should be a better project for it. And that's all the business I have under my business. District 3, Councilman Sullivan.
Real quick, just want to thank Lydia. I've only known you for three years, but I do appreciate everything you've done for the city and wish you the best. Brother Byron and his wife Courtney, I can barely see her. Thank you for coming. You're always welcome. Come back anytime. And Chief Burton, congrats. Looking forward to a lot of work from you. That's all I have.
Thank you. District 4, Councilmember Sims?
Proud to be here.
I hear you, man.
Thank you. District 5, Councilman Harper?
I'd like Councilman Sullivan to say, "Thank you, Lydia. It meant a lot to the city of Northport. I appreciate it." So, Chief Burton, congratulations. Look forward to it.
Thank you. The Honorable Mayor Bobby Herndon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things, as I stated before Brother Byron prayed a while ago as far as the citizens out there in Roseburg, Oregon, because I've made comments before in the last several months and several, you know, the last couple of years, that, you know, people get on social media, a lot of people on Facebook and Twitter, and I said this exact same thing at Homecoming, at my speech at the Homecoming, Pep rally at County High, to all the young people there. If you see anything out of the ordinary on your Facebook or your Twitter or whatever thing you're on, I don't know how to operate that stuff, but some of you guys do. You know what normal conversations are. But if you ever see anything out of the ordinary, something that strikes you as being funny or suspicious, you know, please tell somebody. The guy out in Roseburg, I don't understand, posted something on some social media site before he went in and started shooting people. But always be aware of things that are going on. If you're afraid, well, I'll get in trouble, or somebody get mad at me if I tell on them. Well, if you tell me, and I'll tell on them, you know. Just a different world that we live in. Also, Chief Burton, thank you for your services interim. I know it's going to be great having you as chief of Northport Police Department, and I congratulate you. Burton, you sounded good second in motion a while ago. Has that seen, been practicing? I just fit right in. And also to Lydia. Now, Lydia has been a friend to Northport, and I've been here seven years. And sometimes there's some things she might put in the paper that you don't really want her to put in the paper, but it's the truth, and she always does it in a very professional manner, and wish you the best at the university. You know, we're just sorry to see you go, but we want you to come back anytime, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 15 is adjournment. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. All in favor, please say yes. All opposed, same like sign. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.